Um. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and uh call this meeting to order. Um. We'll do a quick roll call. Um I'm Omari Ferguson, the Chair, um Commission. Present.
Yes, well, uh Rena, did you want to?
Yeah. Chair Mari Ferguson is here, Vice Chair Charles Trevino. Commissioner David Malley.
Present.
Excuse absences for tonight, uh Commissioner Ryan Jones and Commissioner Sam Hernandez. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um now I'll call, um I guess the next thing we have is our public comments. Um, do we have any public comments from anyone in attendance?
Yes, we had one public comment submitted via email. Um it is posted and in your packets. Um. It is a general comment, and we also have one in-person comment tonight. Can I go ahead and call the? One public comment in person up? Are we ready?
Yep.
Hey, Anne Bagasow.
Hi, um good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. Um I just wanna say thank you. This is the first time I've been to a Public Works Commission meeting, so this is fun. Um I would just like to thank Commissioner um Ferguson for his grace and dignity in the face of what was a um reprehensible public comment at the last council meeting. Um I so appreciate Mr. Ferguson's willingness to serve this city, given um is oftentimes unfair, if not biased treatment by some members of our community. Um I don't appreciate the reasons that I've heard why some members of our council struggle to give him an appointment um in spite of his amazing qualifications to do this work. Um, and I also don't appreciate some of the words I'm hearing other members of the commission and the community use to describe Mr. Ferguson. Um, I think we should all be very grateful for his willingness to be here, for his willingness to um to diversify our commissions, but not only just to be here as an African-American man, but to bring his experience and his knowledge and his input um to help our city progress and and to stay healthy as far as our infrastructure and our public works. Um, Mr. Novatny has, the first time I met Omari was in twenty twenty, and Mr. Novatny has been harassing him and slandering him in social media and anywhere he's can for the last four years, and the fact that he came here in these chambers four years later to make the public comment that he did is extremely um timely, I think. Um, but also, I just, I just wanna say it now, what Mr. Novatny said was racist. To come here and say the things he did, to use language like he's a little kid or he's a low-level vandal, those are racist things to say about any person of color, but particularly an African-American man. We have an historic significance of his appointment here in our city and in this year when we have an African-American woman running for president who very may well win. And um I know that we're a former sundown town and we like to act like we're progressive and liberal and accepting and, you know, we have our immigrants are welcome here and Black Lives Matter signs out, but do does a majority of South Pasadena really feel that way? I would hope that this commission would stand up and defend Mr. Omari about the, against these type of attacks, and I'm also disappointed that the council, when I've seen them stand up for other people and interrupt during public comment um and and uh admonish people who are making comment from the public and stand up for their staff, which they very well should, that not one of them said one thing to defend Mr. Ferguson's character. What Mr. Novatny is doing is character assassination. I don't know why he's so invested in this. And um I just wanted to say that, that I I appreciate you, Mr. Ferguson, and thank you for continuing to wanna serve this very ungrateful city. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any more public comments.
Um, I guess we'll get into our presentation of the SIP project update. Oh, did I skip a section?
That's actually um item number three.
Yeah, yeah, we're, oh, you're you're jumping the, you're jumping the gun. You're ready, you're ready to get, you're ready to set a new record for us getting out of here.
Ready to go in. All right.
Uh, good evening Commissioners, but we'll, we'll get going and we'll, we'll jump right into our CIP project update. Um, I'm sure all of you are excited to talk about this. Uh. So this year during the um budget uh discussions with council, there was particular attention to the CIP, CIP project list and its prioritization. Uh not just that, there was a desire from the council for additional resources to be added um to the Public Works CIP program so that we could um uh more efficiently execute projects and see more progress on projects this year. Uh and so next week at the City Council, we'll be bringing an item for the City Council's request during the budget process to um add consultant uh staff augmentation to the department, a program manager and two project managers, and we'll talk a little bit more about the projects that they're getting assigned to um to assist in getting uh more projects delivered a little bit faster uh this fiscal year. Uh so we're excited about that item. Um. What we provided in the packet tonight is a list of the CIP projects, um a breakdown of the funding, and we've highlighted the projects that the council's determined or is basically um agreeing with SASS recommendation of what the higher priority should be. All these projects will be worked on during the year, but we're working on the ones that are prioritized by the council um first. You can see that in a pink highlight. Uh so for example, our top priority project of all the projects is actually um the replacement of the fire doors on the fire station, and that's for obvious reasons to, you know, make sure that we've got reliable um facility, the fire trucks can get out of the building. Um, the current doors are older, and so they're being replaced with these um newer um quick uh rate, quickly rising doors um with all new um equipment associated with it. So that is a um a bid package that we are actually gonna be advertising this week, and we'll have the installation done um over the next couple of months uh by uh the door installer. So that's like one example of some of the higher priority projects. Our expectation was tonight to talk about um a handful of the projects. We can certainly address any of the ones you have questions about. Um but we wanna certainly touch on those and then the ones that we're gonna be bringing in the project management help uh starting next week uh through the City Council agenda. Um, so as I'm going through these, any questions to start with?
Sure, I have a question, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. I'm more just here that you have four, you have four items. Ninety-two, twenty-nine, ninety-two, thirty, ninety-two, thirty-one, and thirty-two. I assume that that's police department locker room remodel, police department front counter remodel.
Yeah, uh yeah, exactly. So that um that nine-two-two-nine was a larger project last year. Um, we've reduced it in scale, and the reason behind that was you'll see, so let me go over this uh um this table for you. What you'll see is uh besides the project IDs and the accounts and the name and title, we have what was appropriated in twenty-three, twenty-four. Um and so you see a lot more projects that were appropriated in twenty-three, twenty-four. So one of the council directions was to reprioritize and focus, and so we reduced the number of projects that we're working on this current fiscal year so we could focus. Um and we also changed the scope of some projects. So for that PD locker room remodel, we used to have a hundred ninety thousand appropriated, and that was really um a low amount for what the police were looking to do. They were looking to, this is the locker room that's in the basement of the building. Um, much older, the lockers need a replacement, and there's, you know, many, many lockers. There's some issues with the ceiling. Uh so there's a big, big project there um that, you know, uh one thought about that is how much you're gonna invest into a building that needs a lot more work and may need replacement in some years. So the idea was to scale the project down and focus on what was really important, and what's really important is actually um fix and remodel the showers, um you know, address some possible remediation in those locations, and so that's why the project budget's been reduced. But to your um uh, to your point, Commissioner Trevino, the uh those other projects are still on our radar. Um they're just not budgeted in this current year. We pushed them out another year. So this year we'll work on the locker room remodel, the front counter lobby remodel, the briefing, training room update um will be completed in a future year, likely next year. The first floor interior paint, drywall millwork, we actually completed last year, so that's uh that project is done.
Follow-up question, Chair. Um, it's it's just to me, it's it's a statement that I'll make that I think the police department deserves our full attention. Uh, especially when it comes to a training room, the briefing and training room update, nineteen thousand dollars. That's what it's, that's what uh it's appropriated back in twenty-three, twenty-four. And it's not a huge amount of money, nineteen thousand. Um, have we given any thought? Yeah, and I think this is the same situation with with uh water issue, infrastructure, et cetera. You know, you can bring money to the table, among the sorts of Metropolitan, the state or the federal. But uh I wish I could see the city being more aggressive in in pursuing uh grants and pursuing that type of money. Is there any thought being given to doing that for these type of projects?
Yeah, that's a really good point. Um, so uh there, it takes quite a bit of effort to pursue those grants, as you know, and you've assisted us with the ones that we've been awarded. Um, we've talked to the police department about this and what the prioritization should be. They did want us to focus on the locker room above other projects. Um, not that those should fall off the radar, uh because these were essentially um projects that are funded out of our facilities account, which is essentially general fund money that comes in. Um, we did have to be cognizant of how we're gonna spend it without that grant money. Um, now, uh, we for facility improvements, we have applied for grants and we've been rejected. Um, for example, the library, we've applied for quite a substantial amount, and we didn't receive any of it. Um, we've recited, we provide for other types of um like uh congressional grants and things like that. The issue really becomes that we um there's a lot of groundwork that we have to lay in order to really qualify for these grants. Granting agencies wanna see that we've spent money and put, you know, together designs. We've got a plan. Um, it's not just an idea that they're funding, it's something that's ready to go. And so in other areas, not necessarily the police department, because we haven't, we and the police don't have the resources to do that. Um, we have put together um, you know, very complex proposals to apply for new grants this year. So for example, um, our Huntington Drive project, which is Metropolitan, and you assisted us in getting a portion of funding for. Um, we've spent quite a bit of effort this year in developing a whole preliminary design report and going through the environmental process and the geotechnical process so that we can apply for that, you know, ten, fifteen million dollars for those types of things.
And I, speaking of that, um a lot of times we get this money from either the state of Metropolitan Water District. It calls for the city to also leverage some of that money. To buy a, ask for grants or clients and using some of that money to leverage some grants. Because you're right, you're absolutely right. To get a grant, they're gonna wanna see that you have money available. And that it's feasible to do that project. So um I I just think that um it's something that we, you know, especially pursue. And that they.
Yeah, you you're not alone in that thought. We've had that discussion um with council members too, and uh, you know, it's really just about, it's a, it's a resource issue. Um, about, you know, both our team, a central team, grants team at the city, and the police department trying to pursue as much as possible, and they have gotten grants, you know, there. Um, there's several grants that uh the police have attained, have obtained for their operations this year. Uh I just don't think they're eligible to apply to something like a thi- this um.
Final point, I made, Chair, final point.
Yeah.
That point to, that two-point-three million dollars that that we were able to get from Water Quality Authority, you know. You know, I, there is provisions in there that we can use, some of that money could be uh as leverage for for further grant release. And uh I think that that's something that that really should be, should be pursued. Uh. It's, it's just a thought. I think that that's a thought that merits a lot of consideration, and I know you've been working on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Leverage some some monies for grant.
Yeah, and and um, we've done that, uh you know, for example, um some of our uh transportation and street repair money, we've, we've applied for um a federal grant for the Safe Streets for All program, and we've, we're leveraging money that we do have as, you know, a um, I think it's a twenty percent match for that, uh so we could try to obtain some of that federal dollars. So uh we do uh try to do that strategically as much as possible.
So I just wanna comment with regards to and I just calculated the amount here, which was um two-hundred-thirty-nine thousand dollars. That was supposed to be appropriated this year or twenty-three, twenty-four. In addition to seeking the grant money, which is great ideas, but I believe what Ted was referring to, it's the manpower doing the application process, so I get that, and he's trying to get that figured out. We have another commission that oversees the police department. I'm asking you, I don't know if if you're gonna know this question, but for the police department, there's a lot of people here in the, in the community that supports the police department. Have they thought about any fundraising things outside of the grant money? Is there any existing fundraising for the police department right now to improve that? Because if there was and it was out on the board, I think this money would get would get raised immediately. Um, and I'm not looking to you, Ted, I mean, um uh, that's something that mi- might need to be addressed with it, the Chief of Police. I know his job is expanded right now um as well, but uh, maybe that's something to bring up to the Police Commission Department and and say, hey, guys, how about you spearhead that, make this your pet, this is two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. What events are, we've got this wonderful war memorial, we could have some wonderful fundraisers there and achieve this goal. That takes a lot of pressure off you. We can allocate, I get it, have a budget issue too, which, you know, is a big hot topic of conversation. So uh I forgot about you, Mayor. So that's just something, maybe yeah, maybe if that's something of a, of an idea, I don't know if that's out there, but I'll uh hand it off to you. Just wanted to bring that up.
Um, as far as I'm concerned, the um, the Public Safety uh Commission is in charge of, um, they have the purview within their purview to um relate with uh public safety issues as us, police department. With, in terms of fundraising, um Ted can correct me, um they can also resource um federal grants from Homeland um Secure uh Department of Homeland Security, which they have been successfully uh procured in the past. Um, and um there are also other federal grants in there available, but in terms of fundraising, um I don't know of any active fundraising, um like the typical um a car washing or
Yeah.
um, um dinner at a restaurant, something like that, but I'm not aware of any active fundraising. But as to the budget, I'm very uh proud to say that from a three-point-seven million deficit, it's turned around now to one-point-zero-eight million surplus.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So we adapted the budget.
Um, thank you so much.
That money.
So, so that sort of all, that all ties together and and so the um, you know, the police do receive grants, they, you know, they get, they get a selective traffic enforcement program grant, they've gotten Homeland Security grants. I don't know the eligibility requirements for those and whether they can apply to facility projects. This isn't just about the money, though. Um, you know, one of the council's directions was, and this is why the um scale of projects was reduced, was that just internally, to actually accomplish some of these projects requires a lot of resources, and they want us to focus, you know, as you look through this several-page document, you'll see that, you know, this focuses on street improvements, there's focus on the library, there's water, sewer, um, we're building two new parks, you know. That that bid package is already out, and we're getting contractors bidding on that right now. So those are the types of things that um just uh have to, we have to defer other types of facility projects just because of the capacity. Um, but yeah, I, I think it's, it's all very good points um about uh the strategy in terms of trying to get funding, and uh to the mayor's point, um, part of this reconfiguration of the CIP was to reduce the impact on the general fund as well, so that we could have, we could resolve that issue. But yeah, all very good ideas. So um with that, uh we can, we can kinda walk through um project statuses. The focus for general building and facilities, like I said, is the fire station at the moment. Um, first the door replacement, then the exhaust system replacement. That's the system that actually keeps the uh exhaust from um uh gathering inside the building. There's like an actual exhaust pipe that connects to the exhaust, and then it pulls up into the ceiling after the vehicles leave. Um. Besides that, uh the item that we're bringing to council next week is going to be um addressing uh library um project management, and then also the senior center project management. So we have the senior center flooring, um which has been a project that we've wanted to focus on, but the priority gets getting, keeps getting pushed because of other uh projects. Yes, uh Chair Ferguson.
One of my quick just comments is that when we have a column that's saying in progress, um if, is there an estimated completion or like uh what that we could put uh next to this, that we kinda have an idea of like what in progress, get some context around what in progress means?
Sure, you know, estimated completion is difficult because of, um, but we could probably do like a percentage complete.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be helpful, so you could see like, you know, where at the beginning or towards the end.
Right.
Yeah, we could do something like that.
Just somewhere, just somewhere to
Yeah.
have some uh fidelity in knowing what in progress.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, for example, the pocket parks, um, we were ready to publish that bid in January. There was a design delay from our vendor, and then, you know, some changes that were required for building safety code. And then here we are, now we published the bid in August. So um, you know, if you'd asked me what the completion date would that be, I would've said it would already happened. But now we're just getting started. So I think a percent complete would would be a good idea, and then, you know, in the some cases, we may stay at a certain percent complete for some time because of some project delay.
Yeah, I mean, um, I guess, cause like some of these things too, like as far as the timeline, it's like um if we know how far out it is, like let's say, some of these things we know need to be, they have an extensive amount of design or or a lot of, a lot of upfront cost uh in some of that design. So if we know that that's like a five-year-out thing or a four-year-out thing, it's just helpful to know that this is part of an incremental spend, something that we'll be tracking over time. Um, and you know.
Yeah, and um, you know, we can, for future uh meetings, uh when we do these updates, this is part of a five-year program. We didn't have enough space on this page to show you it. It's published in the budget, but in those cases, you could see this project's done in this fiscal year, or this is a project that's gonna take several years, and we, you can see the progression of the spending for the next few years. That's a helpful comment. Um, so, you know, uh there's several IT projects uh that are in the works. Um, the one that is you know, we don't have any high priority projects here, but one of particular focus is the um CD permit management software. So that's already been implemented. There was quite a bit of um expenditure so far. The um staff is using it. The next phase of that is actually to hopefully open that up to the public to submit permit applications through an online interface, and the Community Development Department and the Public Works Department are working on that project.
Has that been uh effective so far, the the management?
Yeah, I believe so. I, I, you know, I think it's, it's quite a transition because it involves not just community development, but Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Building and Safety um Division, which is TransTech. Uh and so, you know, um, the software is only as powerful as, you know, the utilization and the interfacing between the departments, so there's still some things to be worked out there. But it certainly has uh changed the organization and thought process of how things should work. That's been an improvement.
Great.
Um, as I mentioned, the library, we have uh, you know, quite a few projects to address um of utmost importance, just because of the library's operations is is doing something about security. Um, and then uh the roofing is already past its useful age. Our consultant who did an assessment on the roof um, did make, suggest that we replace it. Um. And, you know, there wasn't much we could do for repair, so we're still evaluating that, but that's, this, that project is one of the higher priorities that our new project management consultant will be working on.
I do wanna comment that there was some landscaping improvement done, and the feedback from the residents have been incredible. The usage during um Thursday night's uh Farmer's Market has increased the, uh, so I just want you to be aware that visibility, because of that landscaping improvement, the feedback from the police department has been excellent. So they're able to see everything. Now, when you head over to Senior Center, we can, if we can focus our attention on that, I know that, I I don't know if it's in budget, but just in that area, the police department has commented on how they can look and see, and there's nothing hidden at all. Um, so uh appreciate you doing that, and uh the residents are very happy with that improvement, so.
That's great feedback. Um, you know, it's not just these two projects that we're working on. We're, we've budgeted for, um, you can see the other project we've budgeted to work on this year, and our project manager is gonna be assigned um the, the ramp lighting improvements project, the facility improvements, which is a lot of interior work. Um, and uh as well as, you know, the library itself is gonna be working on that RFID project. Uh but then, like I mentioned, the senior center, we've focused on the flooring, but if there's other improvements that can be done, um, we have a general facilities improvement project on the first page called the citywide facility repairs, and that can also incorporate some small um scale stuff at the senior center.
Overall, the uh, overall, they're just really very impressed with uh how it's looking here.
That's great.
I think maybe the landscaping company is uh, the the change has also been uh so far so good.
Yeah. That's fantastic.
So you, you kinda touched on that. That was gonna be one of my follow-up questions, was that citywide facilities repair, a little bit of a breakdown of what that meant? But um
Sure.
that's just kind of like, is that just kind of like a catch-all?
A bit. So what it really is, is to address um an evaluation that was done in twenty-seventeen of all city facilities that showed in twenty-seventeen dollars that there was essentially a three-point-seven million dollar need for repairs throughout um buildings, you know, things like uh, you know, AC system repairs and some accessibility improvements and electrical systems and things like that. That's obviously quite a bit of a chunk to bite off, so we took about um you know, ten percent of that or so and focus on a cer- a few areas. So, so far, that work has replaced the furnace on top of City Hall when it failed. Um, it's done some other sort of smaller-scale work. Um, a lot of it, unfortunately, because of the deferred maintenance on the facilities is reactive. So, you know, where we spend a lot of money in building maintenance, which is an operational cost, when it comes to be some sort of replacement that we have to do, um then uh, which is like a capital replacement, then we'll source that fund.
Okay.
So i- i- it's, it's it's a I don't wanna call it a catch-all because it's, it makes it sound like uh um it's for anything, it's for things that are, are capital replacements as a result of that deferred maintenance.
Oh, okay. So is it, so then it's specifically things that is there anything, is it possible for something to be repaired off of this budget item that wasn't captured in the twenty-seventeen evaluation?
Absolutely, but so what we'll do though is um, if any, if anything's like a maintenance repair, we try to handle it through our operational accounts. If it's a capital improvement, where we're building something new and the asset can be capitalized, then we'll do it through a capital account, and so you'll probably see in that account. But it's usually, you know, uh something somewhat substantial. For example, that furnace replacement, you know, we had to bring in a crane, it was, it was a big deal.
Okay, that was considered a capital improvement.
Exactly, a capital improvement.
Happened under this citywide facilities repair plan.
Um, well, the citywide facility repair did say that that H, that system was gonna need replacement at some point, but with such a wide um uh breadth of problems that that assessment had, you know, uh we couldn't necessarily ded- dedicate twenty-seventeen, you know, three-point-seven million, that's even grown now, cause that was seven years ago. Um, so we had to basically set aside money to address the issues that were gonna happen on an annual basis that need to be repaired. Um, because it uh, it would be tougher if, say, we didn't budget any money, and then we came to council and said, hey, we need
Yeah.
you know, ninety thousand dollars to fix this problem, and we have to find that ninety thousand dollars instead of having uh money set aside that's ready to go.
I, I get the rationale for it. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, like, wrap my, my brain. You said we don't have to do this now, but just kind of, I wanna get my head around um on which basis it gets triggered.
Sure.
Any from it.
Uh, so it, it's be triggered on a capital improve, a capital replacement of a, of a facility item. And that's no small thing. A lot of the way the C I P was organized wouldn't be done in a different city because in this city, we, you have to go to council for anything that's over $30,000 expenditure. So where another city would budget $100,000 for a HVAC replacement and they would just do it because it's budgeted, they wouldn't need a council approval, we would need, you know, a review of that before he spent it. So that gives us, you know, it makes more sense for us to set this money aside. And then when we need to spend it, we ask council to spend that particular, for that particular item.
Got it.
Yeah.
You, you said that these highlighted items are for the consult, uh, project management, two project management professionals that are going to be.
Um, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to miss, miss, uh, provide that out of context. The ones that are highlighted are ones that were essentially determined as consensus as high priority by the council.
Okay.
We have a separate list of items that are going to be, going to fund the project management team. Essentially that makes up the street improvements, the water and sewer pipeline replacements is funding the majority of the team. And then several library and senior center projects, as well as that item we just talked about, the facilities repairs are funding one team member that's dedicated to facility improvements.
Okay. If I could just take it as an item, like an action item to get.
So that'll, that breakdown be published in the council agenda tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Perfect.
So then when we start to go over these in like future meetings as far as the progress, are we going to get, just get like, so I guess some reports? I guess we'll have some breakdowns. So I know which of these items.
Yeah, that's the idea. Actually, so this team, part of their scope is actually to provide those reporting.
Okay.
Um, so that, you know, they're both working on the projects and they're tracking their budget and then they're reporting to us so that we can report it to you. You know, we could do that, but again, it's another thing that's on our list in addition to doing everything else. So we've tried to, but that is one package out to the consultant to help us with. So with the council's approval of that item next week, we would, we're essentially kicking off that work the next day. We already have the meeting scheduled and we've already interviewed the team members. That'll be those three project team members and we'll be starting it by the end of September on some work. So jump into page four, as I already mentioned, our top priority in the parks area is the Gravalia and Berkshire Pocket Parks construction. There were some delays, but we did publish that. The plans are out there. If you're interested, they're available online. If you go to our website and you go to, you know, the review bid section at the top of the website there, you can look at them. And we had our job walk yesterday with, we invited contractors to attend that. And we're expecting bids in by next Thursday, I think is our cutoff for our bid opening. So we'll be awarding the construction award. The plan is awarded on October 2nd at council.
On that, on that, did we talk about, we talked about kind of like some kind of signage or banner to be outside on that fence?
Yes, thank you. So Chair Ferguson had brought that up about putting a banner on the fencing for the project to, you know, advertise that the project's coming. So I did have that conversation with community services and they're going to develop that banner and put it on the park.
Right.
Uh, for both Berkshire and Gravalia.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great.
Terrific. And just for everyone's knowledge, we're still referring to it as Berkshire Park because our hundreds of pages of construction documents refer to it, but the name has officially changed to the Dr. Beatrice Solis Memorial Park. And that's what will actually to be displayed on the park itself.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Of course. On our next page is where, you know, a lot of our priorities lie sewer replacements, stormwater projects, and those are, you know, a priority. They might not be the flashiest project, but they're a high priority because of water quality and pollutant requirements. And then our street improvements, which was the council's, very clearly the council's main priority for us to move forward with. And so we have several bid packages in the process. You know, some are close to bidding, some are about 90% design will be bid early 2025. And then others are entering the design phase. So that, you know, very large plan that we showed you, I probably, probably about a month or two ago of all the projects, we're in the, you know, year two, planning for year three phase of those projects. And with those water lines and sewer lines get replaced. On our last page, page six, we have our transportation and our water projects. For transportation, we do have high priority projects because we have funding that needs to be spent and obviously traffic problems that need to be solved. So right now our Fremont Huntington dual projects, you'll see them there as, you know, project 2008 and then at the bottom 2005 there, that's one big project that has two, you know, it's two projects officially, but just one big effort. That the planning work is completed. We did a whole thing at the library last fall. If you came to that, we were out there for about two weeks with many, many different community groups talking about Fremont Huntington. And now that's in, going to be in the, in the R F P stage to get a designer on board. The north-south corridor I T S deployment, that is replacing the traffic signals and making some safety improvements along Fair Oaks. That's in the design stage and we'll actually be reviewing the design with M tech next, in next week's meeting. Our R F Bs is, that is almost ready to bid. There's a couple, it's federal funded. There's a couple of issues with that funding that we're trying to resolve. If we're not able to resolve it, we have a secondary funding source that we can utilize. But that project's pretty close. It's just a lot of, a bit of red tape that we have to clear up with that project.
Which, which item was that?
That's the retangular rapid flashing beacon. So that's three. The retangular rapid flashing beacons are those, you know, things that you flash, that flash on the side of the street when you're trying to cross. And we have three planned, one at Mission and Diamond, one at Mission and Fairview, and then one at Fremont and Linden near the high school.
Okay. And this one line represents all of those locations?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. In the water area, we talked about the pipeline replacement. We're doing that in accord and concert with the street replacements. And our big item is the West Side Reservoir that we've talked quite extensively about here. We've been in touch with the consultant, the very first phase, the very first step of that, besides all the contracts and the subcontractors and, you know, establishing all the pre-design sort of administrative work is per the council's request. They want us to do an early community outreach meeting with the residents just to get their very early feedback, not waiting till we get too far into the design process. And so we'll be scheduling that. We'll likely hold it at the library, keep you informed of the date. And we'll have our consultants there to listen to the community about what their concerns are about that project.
Quick, quick question on this one. Because we're doing the construction and like the construction and the design are going to be somewhat separate in a sense. Because we're, we have a package that's going to go out, that's going to get the, the, like the design proposal before we kick off the construction. I'm wondering if the construction should be a separate item, just as far as that, because we're going to, you're going to be able to close out the, 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 the design once we get the consultant's report back, right? And so I'm wondering if we can split these into two separate things.
So we could, so it just depends on how cities and finance departments really want capital work to be organized. So for example, the Fremont Huntington project we're talking about here on the, on the transportation section, those numbers include design and construction. And the reason for that is because those are the eligible expenses that are reimbursable under the grants. So design and construction are looped in together, but we didn't include planning. So planning costs us like $250,000. Different funding source, different, you don't see it here because we split it out. So what we're doing right now with West Side Reservoir is technically preliminary design. We're doing a preliminary design report. Then we move into design and then we do move into construction. Depending on how our funding is organized, we could split out preliminary design and then design and construction later, but likely the funding will come from the city's water enterprise fund. It's possible we get a, a state revolving loan to pay for West Side Reservoir or a grant. As Commissioner Trevino had alluded to for water, it just really depends on how it's organized and how the finance department wants to organize. We can report it to you any way you want, really just to break it out because we have to track those phases separately. The only thing I'll say is that the city has typically followed a preliminary design, design, bid, build pathway. This might be a circumstance where we can actually do a design, build project because it is such a unique tank. And there's really only, we know of one company that would probably build this thing and help with the design. So it really just depends on how things go. I know it's a long winded answer, but it's possible what you're saying. It just depends on how we want to go about it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about also just like the, in the way that it's reported. Because we're going to have basically like this incremental point where we're going to get this design. And then it's going to, then it's going to, then we're going to have a separate bill for.
Yeah.
And so, so if we just, it's going to, this is going to show as a project that's budget's going to blow way out of proportion, right? Or it's going to be one thing was completed, it, it's done and now.
Sure. So we, we try to manage that with, by putting it in phases.
Yeah.
So, you know, planning, preliminary design, design, construction, commissioning, so we can break out the phases and show at each phase costs. Even if we loop everything into one C I P budget. You know, then you get to, you know, you could see it both ways because then people will say like, well, I want the total cost for the project from start to finish. Versus like, you want to know what the construction costs were. So we could do that as a phased approach and we try to organize it that way.
Thank you.
So with that, happy to answer any questions you have about specific projects. Like I said, we do have a team that'll be starting by the end of the month. That's going to enhance our reporting ability and also enhance our ability to get some of these things done. And so we're pretty excited about that and we'll be addressing that with the council next week.
Hey, I do have one more thing to slow you down. Sorry. Um, yeah, but the, the senior center flooring, you, you mentioned that, that as being in progress is, what, what was the anticipated completion for that one?
Sure. So, you know, it's interesting project because it seems simple, but there's, if you've been to the senior center, there's things in the floor, there's outlets, there's a transition into the kitchen, which won't have a new floor. There's doorways and you have to think about the demographic of the folks that are using senior center flooring is a pretty critical thing for it to be, you know, flat and navigable. So, so we had organized that project. And, you know, we had largely gotten a bid package together. But our staff had to focus on other infrastructure needs. So it kind of got, got any pushed. So it's been basically on hold for quite some time. It is one of the projects that we're going to be assigning to that project manager that will be awarded next week.
Okay.
Um, one of his eight projects at the library and senior center. So we're, we don't have a timeline yet because we have to sort of work out what he thinks he can accomplish. But, you know, the full project should be done by June 30th. That's the expectation.
Okay. Um, yeah, you know, it doesn't have the, the fuchsia or magenta square around it.
Right. Cause it's not, it's not technically a high priority.
So I guess you guys need like a, like a, like a light, light color version of it, like a light pink square.
Well, as soon as the council approves, like, because they could, the council could say, you guys are crazy. We're not going to do this. I don't think so. We've been talking about it for months. But as soon as the council approves our project management association, our next report, we can show you which ones have been assigned that way.
So I'll try to read the signs from the space flooring. All right. Well, thank you.
And, and it's not to say that it's not a high priority because what I'll say is there's projects that aren't even on this list that are low priority. If they're on this list, they're a priority for us. We're going to do them this year. It's just that within that list, there's a subset of projects that we have to get done faster than the other ones, if that's fair.
Look, you guys have had to deal with a deficit. You had to figure that all out. So I, we get it.
I have, of course.
Yeah. Appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you so much.
All right.
No, I mean, we, you know, if, we, we do would like your feedback, if anything, on our, you know, our, our augmentation of staffing to, you know, ask for some more support. The council's already asked us to do this so that we didn't ask you for recommendation because they've already directed us to do it. But, you know, it would be helpful if you were also supportive of that process so that, you know, we can tell council that you are. Yeah. Sure. Supportive of that, that concept of bringing on consultant staffing. Yeah. Terrific.
That's great. Yeah. Thanks. I mean, obviously, if you need help, get the help, let's get it so that we can get things done. I'll take it from there.
Great to hear. Thank you so much.
Got to find some more money to do everything, save the time.
Well, this is balanced. We'll see how things go this year and then next year. Yeah.
Action discussion, we have the approval of our minutes of July, of July 10th, 2024, Public Works Commission.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. So motion made by Vice Chair Trevino and a seconded by Commissioner Malley. I'm going to do a quick voice vote. Cheryl Marie Person.
A favor.
And Vice Chair Charles Trevino. Commissioner David Malley. Motion passes three zero unanimously. Thank you.
All right. So then we're going to go into item number four. Um, that's the water facility tour.
I think there's some dates that were thrown out. Did we all agree on a certain date?
We actually didn't provide dates. The email that originally went out was just a kind of a feeler of who's interested. Um, we did get everyone's response. I think I just had one commissioner not respond. So uh, we were going to take this time to discuss possible dates in the future.
Yeah. And thank you, Raina, for organizing this and for taking the lead on it. The only item I just wanted to say about this is, you know, of course, Brown Act requirements apply. So if, obviously if everybody on the commission wanted to go, we'd have to break it up into probably three different tours because we can't have more than two people on a tour and establish a quorum on our tour. So we want to gauge interest first about who would like to go. Some of you may have already seen the facilities so that we can kind of identify how many groups we need to take and, and how we're going to schedule. That's pretty much what we wanted to make sure was clear.
I, I thought the tour that was done many moons ago was great. I know you put it together and you both did and it was a great tour.
Sure. So.
I think for the other.
So new members, that's, that's what we wanted to clarify. Yeah.
All of us, I mean, I'd like to do it again.
Yeah. It's easier for us to have this discussion without having a, you know.
Yes, I get it.
We can't get you all together to talk about this.
We have to have the conversation here so that we're not violating the Brown Act if we have.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Um, and so, um, yeah, I'm, I would, would love to go on the tour. Haven't done it yet. If, you know, I, if they need to be scheduled, I'm open. Just let me know whatever works.
There was some dates that you had thrown out. Did we need to solidify a date or do you want to just send that out?
Oh, we haven't sent out official dates just yet. I think maybe we wanted to discuss what maybe day of the week works best. Is this something we want to plan for October?
Sure. So I think what we're agreed is that, you know, we've done the tour before. You've probably seen it. You guys are busy. Chair Ferguson hasn't done the tour. We don't know about Chair Jones.
Uh, Chair Jones hasn't replied to
Okay, got it.
That just yet, Commissioner, Commissioner Hernandez.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones. Yeah.
Yeah. Chair Jones hasn't replied just yet. Commissioner Hernandez has replied. He is interested in going.
Okay. So maybe what we do is we organize a tour for Chair Ferguson and Commissioner Hernandez. That'll be one tour because we can only do two people on a tour. And then we'll see if, is it Vice Chair Jones?
Vice Chair Trevino.
Yes. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, Commissioner, Vice Chair Trevino. I was calling you Commissioner Trevino.
The vice chair wants to go after November 5th.
Right. Yes. Okay. No problem.
That's a good point.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll start there. Yeah. Thank you very much for that. Yeah. Appreciate it.
Let's select a date and we'll be perfect. And maybe we do it in the afternoon or something or whatever, you know, or whatever you all, what's, I think we go off of your schedule.
Sure. So, well, what we can, we can correspond with Chair Ferguson and Commissioner Hernandez offline now, just the two of them to schedule the first iteration of the tour. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we'll, thanks a lot for that. We'll get into communications, item number five, city council liaison communication.
On September 28th, Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have the first ever. We have the first ever multicultural event, which I envisioned last year. So it now is materializing. So it's entitled Around the World in South Pasadena. So far, we have about seven or eight countries that are participating. And there will be music, dance performances, food, informational brochures, and there will be tents all over. And businesses are participating local and some surrounding cities. And we actually have Pasadena participating also. So it's, it's going to be a big event. And it will put South Pasadena in the international map. I know that the Chinese community are covering it internationally. So I'm, I'm really happy for that. And also the, the high school AAPI and different clubs are also participating. And so it's, I'm looking forward to it. And we're, we're still looking for sponsors. It had been, the budget that was approved by city council was twenty five thousand. So, but if we're going to break even or even make a little bit of profit, it would be nice. But we plan, if this is successful, we'll plan this as an annual event that other cities can calendar. And also more countries or even cultures, different cultures all, all over the world can participate. And so I'm looking forward to every one of you and I'd, I'd like to see you there. And let's have some fun. Thank you.
What time is that at?
From, it's Saturday. It's on Mission Street. And the, the main stage will be set at the library, where, where we do our July fourth.
Yeah.
And it's from eleven AM to three PM.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Any, any commission communications, Charles?
No.
Okay. I guess the, I just wanted to thank the, you know, members of the public that submitted a written comment. We'll, we'll take those and hopefully be able to talk about some of these things in future agenda setting. I also wanted to kind of thank the mayor. She, she recently did a presentation at the golf course that was kind of going over some of the projects that are coming up. And so I think that was helpful to get to kind of communicate to the community. And so, so yeah, just wanted to say thank you for that. And, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. I think that's it. I think we can adjourn, right?
We, do we have any upcoming events that we'd like to promote?
Oh, sorry. I cut you short. Staff liaison communications. Sorry.
Sorry Ted. I don't have anything on my end.
The mayor already mentioned the multicultural event. I think that's all we have on our calendar so far. So.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, yes.
You caught the gab on the middle of the air. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty. Thank you.